Solicitor for Lower Buena Township. Prior to that, I was Solicitor for Columbus Civil Service Commissioner and Commission. And prior to that, Solicitor for Moorestown Civil Service Board. I've been admitted to the bar of the United States Supreme Court, Pennsylvania Supreme Court, United States District Court for the Eastern District of Pennsylvania, United States Court of Appeals for the Third Circuit, and it goes on and on and on. So Tom, would you like to say a word or hello?
I just thank the Supervisors for the opportunity to be of service and looking forward to the next couple of months of being on board as an intern Solicitor. Thank you.
Can we change the agenda a little bit? We're going to put general comments at the end and discuss the beginning. What we have here is the agendas. It's a normal agenda, all aligned. We haven't really changed this. The first thing we have is the receipt of the minutes from December the 30th. Craig, remind me, it's on the agenda, but everybody's being recorded, you know, voice recorded. And from now on, we'd also like anybody who has a question or issue, we have a microphone up here, so you raise your hand, you get recognized, you come up here and you can ask your questions. And, you know, let's just try to be as orderly as we can, I'm sure you will. Receipt of the minutes. I'm with the table for receipt of the minutes. Next, is a motion to clarify the appointment of the interim Solicitor at last meeting to recognize the previous motion and ratify the appointment of Tom Spear as the intern Solicitor. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a comment from any of the Supervisors?
No, Tom has been used before with the Lower Buena Township, and I think it'll work out fine.
Thank you. Is there a comment from the audience? Okay, all in favor of Tom's appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Why are you withholding the receipt of the minutes as presented?
We had some questions from the other Supervisors to table. Invoice history, we have received invoice history from December the 20th. Craig, do you have any comments on the?
I have not received any comments from any of the board members.
Do I have a motion for the receipt of the minutes?
Second.
Second. Do I have any comments from the Supervisors? Any comments from the audience? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, motion passed. Next, we have the authorization for the Solicitor to negotiate the purchase of Act 209, Penn and Pike, the current property, to expand the Ingersoll Park. Now, I don't know, unless you play baseball, you may not know where the Ingersoll Park is, but I think most people probably do. There's a tract of land right behind the ballpark. It's a private residence, it has a couple of garages there, and we've asked the Solicitor to look at maybe acquiring the property. So all this is a authorization for him to proceed. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions from the Supervisors?
No, I'd just like to comment that I keep it to be agreed. It's a once in a lifetime opportunity for us to complete ownership of that triangle there, and will present us with some good opportunities for the baseball programs and also some historical opportunities there.
I also talked to the President of the Little League, and they're excited about the township taking a positive stand and buying the property because being involved in that program back in the 70s, to be able to have some property next to a ball field where they can build some permanent restroom facilities, storage and so forth, and I know the township is in desperate need for additional storage, so definitely be in favor of that, getting a favorable review from that from the professionals and moving forward. That's all I have to say.
Okay, yes, go ahead, Des.
I just want to say that I'm also in favor of purchasing the property, but we will be soliciting ideas from the community as we go forward, so we invite you to think about the best use for this property so that you can give us feedback.
Any other comments from the Supervisors? Any comments from the audience? You have to come up there, you have to say your name, address.
It's just a really quick question. I just was, I had asked this question before about the house, and I know there's other things, and I have talked, and people possibly talk about moving in or whatever, but the house is very historical, means a lot to lower Buena. In the early 1900s, it was an integrated school project, which was the lower Buena school system back then, and it just means a lot to the community that's still been there. So I really want you to do whatever you can do to try and consider preserving that building as part of our property.
Any other comments? Okay, call in for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now we have an authorization to advertise the archaic legal services at Lower Buena Township. So those of you who were here last week, or I guess for those of you who were not, we're putting out a request for a proposal for legal services for a Solicitor. Mr. Spear is our interim Solicitor. We're going to take a look and see what's out there and see what legal services are available to us. And this is an authorization to advertise the archaic. Do I have a motion to advertise the archaic? Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion with the Supervisors? Any discussion with the members of the audience? Okay, I have received none. A call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next, we have an authorization to advertise the road program. Craig, could you fill us in on that one?
Yes, Michael Stefano, the Public Works Director, has called out on a faculty issue, so you have me to talk about the road program for 2020. Every year, we do some kind of road improvements throughout the township. Usually it's about two miles per year. This year, we're going to do some conventional melon overlay and some Nova chip on several roadways. And right now, we're looking to authorize to accept bids for three different contracts. One would be for the concrete work, one would be for the milling and overlay, and one would be for the ultra thin bond work, of course. As we've done in the past, we find that we get better pricing when we do it three different contracts. So right now, we're just asking for authorization to advertise bids for the 2020 road program.
Do we know how many miles that is?
Roughly two miles, but so it's a shorter year, shorter mileage.
All right. Do I have an offer, excuse me, do I have a motion to authorize the advertising of the road program?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions from the Supervisors? Any questions from the audience? Call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, I have a new question. This is the authorization to move forward on Act 209. It's a study update. Do we have our traffic engineer here? Chad, would you stand up and introduce yourself?
Chad Dixon from McMahon Associates.
And then Chad, could you tell us what an Act 209 study program is?
Act 209 is what it's often referred to, which was the Enabling Legislation that took place back in 1990 that allowed municipalities to establish what's called a Transportation Impact Fee Ordinance, which allows a municipality to adopt such an ordinance to assess fees to new development, redevelopment, or changes in use in particular instances, fees based on the amount of peak hour traffic that they generate, which is typically in the afternoon commute period. Lower Buena Township adopted a Transportation Impact Fee Ordinance back in 2004 and has been assessing impact fees to new developments since then. We've recommended to the township, based on the enacting legislation from the Municipalities Planning Code for Pennsylvania, which permits these ordinances, that it's time to update the original studies that were done in order to establish a new fee to be assessed for new development as it comes in the future. There's a process that's outlined in the Municipalities Planning Code for how that has to take place. Township has appointed an advisory committee, which provides recommendations to the board Supervisors during our study process, and there's a number of reports that we have to produce that eventually arrives us at the per-vehicle-trip impact fee that's adopted as part of the ordinance. So what's on the agenda tonight is authorization to proceed with the update process, the first thing being appointing a new Transportation Impact Fee Advisory Committee, and then we would commence the necessary studies and reports that we've outlined in our proposal to you to take the township through that process.
So I'm a very bureaucratic, nerdy traffic engineer. I could talk to you all night about it, but I'm sure. How long is this going to take, if you're discussing about?
Typically, it takes anywhere from 12 to 18 months. We'll try to do it closer to the 12-month timeframe so the new fee can be in place sooner because it's likely to be higher than what it is now.
Does anybody have any questions, Supervisors, or Chad? The audience, any questions about the 209 impact fee? Can I use that?
If I could just jump in, can you explain on this Traffic Advisory Committee, how that's formed to what the makeup is, et cetera?
Sure. The Municipalities Planning Code has requirements for the number of individuals that have to be on the committee, on the committee and eligibility. The committee has to be a minimum of seven members, no more than 15. Forty percent of the committee has to be comprised of individuals who represent the development, building, real estate industry. Elected officials of the township are not permitted to be on the committee, township staff or consultants is not permitted to be on the committee. So typically, it's either members from the planning commission, residents who have an interest in serving and have an interest in transportation and traffic engineering, and then the individuals who represent the development, building, construction industry can either live in the township or do business in the township. There's not a residency requirement for those individuals.
It sounds like something that we could put in our newsletter and get residents, make them aware of what you just stated, and have them submit their names to be on that.
And we'll work with Craig on screening candidates that we've recommended.
We have also.
To complement our experience of going many of these developments.
And if you need a subcommittee from the board to help you with the screening, you know, let us know, but definitely I would recommend that we move forward with this.
Do you have an estimated, what's your proposal actually cost on this?
Our estimated cost in our proposal is $59,500.
Fifty ninety thousand?
Correct.
Five hundred dollars.
It hasn't been done since 2003 or '04?
Correct.
Is that, is that from McMahon?
Yes.
All right, do you have that in writing to us yet?
Yes.
It sounds steep to me, but if you said over, spread over a year and a half?
A year, a year and a half, yes. And some of the cost, which will be determined at the end of the study, the township can actually reimburse itself proportionate to cost for us from the impact fee.
Okay. How from the impact?
Our cost is typical for, for, and conduct these programs.
Okay.
That amount of budget is in the 2020 budget.
Okay.
Any questions from the audience?
Give me a comment.
Do I have a motion to approve the study?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And don't go away, because the next one applies to this as well. So it's authorization for land use assumption proposal, which coincides with Act 209 update. So Ken, let's go to you.
Yeah, Ken is not here tonight. Ken Amy is our planner, building officer for the township. In accordance with the Act 209 study that is being done by McMahon now, they need a land use assumptions report. What that is, is the assumption of what the land that we have left in the township is developed property, and our planner, Ken Amy, has provided a proposal for that, to upgrade that land use assumption report in the amount of $95 an hour, not to exceed $2,500 for that. That would go inside. It has to be done.
So it's got to be done with, Ken's got a part too.
Correct. So, okay, so we have two components of this, all of them. Typically, that portion of the study, we always bring someone like Ken to complete that, to extend our expertise level on zoning and how to develop potential development yields for parcels. Instead of combining them together as one project, I thought it was better to have McMahon provide a proposal and Ken Amy provide a proposal.
Okay. All right.
Another question. What, what triggers having this study done? Is there a certain high line, or is this a way we've been applying, so let's do it now?
There's not a particular trigger. It's really up to the discretion of the municipality, how often they want to update these. Most do it, and once they get around the 10-year timeframe, is when they start considering going and update of all the studies in order to have an updated impact fee. So it's a discretion of the municipality. Typically, we see, you know, most wait in that 10-year or so timeframe, which is right around where you're at right now.
Any other questions from the Supervisors?
I have a question. You said our last one was 2003, 2004?
Correct.
So we're beyond 10-year, we're over 16 years. So is there any detriment to the fact that we waited longer?
Well, the only detriment, if it would have been updated earlier, you could potentially have a 50 for a period of time. But like we said, like I said, typically, it is not uncommon with municipalities waiting that timeframe to do, to complete updating.
Any more questions? Questions from the audience? Okay, there are none. I have a motion to approve the authorization of land use assumptions.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. E-cycle in favor of shredding events update? Could you give us an update, Chad?
Many of my local memo, two memos, one from myself and the township manager outlining the request for that for that back on January 6th, for additional proposals for the E-cycle and paper shredding day, and information from one of the state reps that served for the township on their day for having a paper shredding day. And we're just trying to finalize them.
Okay, so we're still working on the dates, is what you're saying, so we can coordinate shredding?
Well, we're trying to work on what the board wants to do. There's proposals in, in the memos from different vendors for different, for paper shredding and for electronics, and the standard is we're looking for direction on who we want to go with and secure the data that.
Okay, so the E-cycle, and for those of you aren't familiar, every year for the last six years?
Twelve.
Well, so you can bring your electronics here and for township residents, there's no fee. A lot of recycling, they're not charging a fee, get rid of your TV sets and that type of thing. And we also have shredding trucks, and those seem to be very popular. People bring boxes and boxes of paper, and they need to shred it, and they can watch it be shredded. Right now, some of the state reps have also got a shredding event scheduled, one's over at the schedule over at High School. So we're trying to coordinate that, so maybe we can save some money on the shredding. Last, I talked to Duke Craig, and he really wasn't clear about what we're going to do with the E-cycle, because if we did the shredding event with the state reps, they don't have a shredding event, excuse me, an E-cycle event, so we really can't combine them, because if we combine them, then we have to take everybody's E-cycle, whether or not it was the original township or not. So we just have to work out the details on how to get the best value for the township and, you know, save on the paper shredding. So we're just trying to coordinate all of that. So you're just looking for some direction.
Looking for direction on what the board feels is the appropriate way to move forward with this E-cycle.
Okay, well, we're going to have to be back to like now.
Comments?
Yes, please.
Lower Buena Township has been a part of since 1995, the Northern Montgomery County Recycling Committee, which is made up of 11 municipalities. I was vice chairman for five years and president of that for the last 20 years. Every year, we, the Recycling Committee hires a staff that composes of a consultant and also a Solicitor, and we monitor all the trash haulers, how much recycling is picked up in all 11 municipalities. And we track it, they're obligated by law to report it to us, and they give us those figures. DEP, if you report those figures, DEP, once a year to them, they in turn give back to the municipalities for doing that work and monitoring it, funds from the state, from the DEP. And Lower Buena Township has been fortunate to secure refunds of anywhere from $25,000 to $40,000, depending on the year, back to the residents, because we asked you to recycle, and you're being rewarded for it. In turn, we've taken that money and created in the township a recycling day. It's usually in April on a Saturday, and it's open to all the residents of Lower Buena. They have to present identification, and they can bring TVs, they can bring old computers, printers, whatever, paper, and free and charge, it's taken care of. And I know that there is now a coordination, the county used to, and they, I think they still do about four times a year throughout the county, they may go to Abington, they may go to Montgomery Mall, they may go to Lower Marion or what have you, where you can bring paint and everything else, but they're not, they don't take TVs. Our state representative in this area is coordinating a recycle day, I think over at Wisecan High School, and I see some of the prices here for TVs, flat screens, about $25, for other sizes, $75. Monitoring, computer monitors are free, air conditioning, dehumidifiers, $15, microwaves, $5, but I don't think there's any shredding going to be done there. I'm in favor, just for the other board members to know, and for the public, I'm in favor of keeping the Lower Buena residents recycle in April and using the funds that you are being given back because of the modernization that we have at the Recycling Commission. So I just, a matter of statement, Mr. Chairman, and to my fellow board members, so.
No, I understand, I just want to keep the program going and want to make sure we can have the best for.
Right, and I think the tonnage has constantly gone up, especially, we used to have a fee, but, and I stand to be corrected with that, Craig, didn't we have a fee at one time?
One year, we, the company changed their idea and charged everyone, individuals that had a modernization.
And every, but every year, our tonnage is going up and more residents are participating. We usually have a supervisor or a police officer checking the IDs. So that's my statement, and just want to go on the record for that. Thank you.
Thank you. So any other supervisor have a comment about?
Yeah, I do, because I know the staff has been looking for some guidance on this since maybe the end of last year, at least since our last meeting. And given the fact that we may lose the vendor that we have used the last couple of years, and we're also up against a content deadline for the newsletter to advertise this property for our residents, and residents are asking. So I'm inclined to take the staff's recommendation to continue the program as we do, where on that Saturday, it's basically a one-stop shop for our residents for free, come in with whatever you want shredded, whatever thing that has a club that you want to get rid of, no fees charged, and we also use that out committee to do our shredding here within the township for things that are legally able to discard. So that's where I stand. I, my vote is to, like I said, take the staff's recommendation, keep it dead the way it is, because it's a very well-received event by our residents, and it doesn't cost them anything, and some of it's spring cleaning around birthday.
Thank you. Any more comments from Supervisors?
I have comments, I just have a couple of questions.
Yes, please.
So I just want to make sure that I'm clear in understanding. Hi, I'm sorry. I'm here.
Thank you.
So my understanding was that State Representative Liz Hamich, Representative Daley, and Senator Colette were coordinating a shredding day at Wisecan High School, and it was going to be paper shredding. It was not going to be electronics at all. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay, and so it's May 16th that they want to do paper shredding, regardless of our collaboration or collaboration or not?
Right.
Okay. And so that our proposed date was April 2nd, and we were going to do both shredding, paper, as well as electronic. So I don't understand why we wouldn't do both. I don't understand why we wouldn't just collaborate with the existing shredding event that's happening at the Lower Buena High School, it's still in Lower Buena, the state reps and the senators are, I guess, inviting their whole entire constituency. But just for us to advertise it to ensure that Lower Buena But just for us to advertise it to ensure that Lower Bonbona residents have the understanding that, you know, they can also participate and collaborate and provide staff in addition to us on April second having our own shredding, e-cycling, if we feel that it is beneficial to have it here, and it's not an additional cost that is too exorbitant. I think my question was more about the particular vendors that we use, if we were to do the e-cycling here. So I was wondering if we could?
I'm not opposed to using both, I mean, not at all.
So I guess my question was, I just wanted us to explore the different costs associated with the different e-cycling providers.
Sure.
All three of them provided us the option to cover all the costs for the residents ourselves, without, you know, any additional fees per TV, microwave, whatever.
But correct me if I'm wrong, the listing I have is some of these TVs maybe seventy-five dollars each, on, on the county side, not our side.
So I think now, what they basically said is we have the option of the township to cover the fees for our residents regardless.
Right.
Or we can extend that fee to the residents if we chose, and then there would be a flat amount that we would have to pay.
Well, I think, yeah, I think the, the one vendor which he's referencing here with the different fees, they had a, it was the Pars one. They had a flat event fee of eight hundred and fifty dollars, and that covered the setup and the breakdown. But they didn't give an actual fee for what was collected, you would be invoiced later, but they're, they didn't provide what you would be invoiced on, whether it would be the number of?
Per ton, so I think another.
Per ton, so.
Yeah, so the other email that they gave us as reference points, because I think they gave us documentation of other townships they've used, including Upper Bonbona, Prospect Park, I think New Britain was in there. Then, none of them had exceeded the cost that we, the highest cost that we had received as a quote, which was, I think, forty-four fifty?
Um, the highest one we received was like eleven thousand.
Oh, I'm not, I wasn't, I wasn't scooping that.
Oh, okay.
The original cost was forty-four fifty?
Yes, correct.
And I think that they said per ton, it was going to come under four thousand dollars for everything, and that was just my understanding. Is that incorrect?
I did not get that information.
I don't know about you.
Okay. I thought I was looking for the email, I have the email somewhere.
What concerns me is not blocking the dates with the vendors that we've been using over the years, because they are booking now, and we're past our original deadline, which was the early, early part of January. And in turn, I don't want to lose those vendors. I'd be very upset if we find out that we want to do it, and then we've lost those vendors, and then the benefit to the residents is, is lost.
Ms. Werman, in the email from this new vendor, where he outlines his, the fees for the various electronics, are the electronics limited to this list? Computer monitors, flat screen TVs, computer monitors, air conditioners, dehumidifiers, air purifiers, and microwaves? He got a remark, there was all kinds of things with clothes at, at Parkmont last year.
Yeah, I don't believe that it's limited, I think he was just listing the, the items that would have a cost to them. I mean, because he does let, some things are, would be free regardless, but I think he was just pointing out which ones would, would cost if, if that was the route that the board went.
Thank you.
Live league discussion about recycling. So the staff needs an answer. I, I requested the supervisors have a recommendation in staff, Greg, like, you know, later in Friday, is that too late?
That's why we would have to come to the board for the hecking.
Right, so we have, we have to have it in seven, though, right away. So we can have the answer by this Friday, and then we can have a motion for their next meeting, and we can let the vendors know, because, no, I can't say, I don't want to lose the vendors either.
Yeah, but I think we need to take a public vote on that, is that what you're saying, Chris?
In the next meeting.
Yes.
In the next meeting, so we might very well lose the vendors, so. It's a pleasure, Chairman.
Yeah, in the next meeting, so we'll have it, we'll have it, we're, so I'll focus on the next. On the next agenda, so we can have a further recommendation. And you can also talk to the vendors and let them know if it's a vote that we're talking about, you know, what the situation is. So, so we don't, so. The next thing on the agenda is the, oh, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. Any, any, well, any, any questions from the audience? It's not a vote, you know, it's a, okay, go ahead, please.
I'm Mark Schaefer, twenty-three Brooklyn Court. Just because on the topic of recycling, Lower Bonbona EAC on the twelfth, Pedware is head of Montgomery County Ped Recycle Con for a special presentation here on recycling in accounting, views and dons, personal issues and things like, usually called the Paper Cur, is that a new program about how it, you know, clean up things? So I just wanted to put that into the record, that we're having on the twelfth here, a special event.
April the twelfth?
February twelfth.
February twelfth, what time?
Seven o'clock, usual EAC meeting.
Okay, sure.
And again, she's the head of Montgomery County Recycle Committee. We invite her here to do a special presentation, if anybody wants to.
Do we have somebody from the management coming for that one?
I think it's coordinated with that as well. I forget what, she's the head one. She's on the website. Just wanted to.
Thank you.
Is there any more questions from the audience, or anybody want to say? Okay, we can move on to the managers' report, Greg.
Uh, Chairman, I have nothing at this point.
Wow, that was quick. What, the new motion? Yeah, that's, that's next. In addition to the agenda, I need a motion to accept entry into the township's life insurance program for a new supervisor, as accepted by the second-class township code.
Second-class township code proviso.
Okay.
So move.
Right, second, that's all. Okay, we need a voice vote. Okay.
Yes, I made the motion.
Head vote, yes.
I'm in favor. Okay.
I.
I, or you, I. You got a good opinion of us? And yet, in your.
I think so.
That's staying.
Okay. So the I's have.
Okay, what, what is that about? What, what are you just voting?
Tom, could you explain that?
The township has a group life insurance program that's pursuant to the second-class township code, which governs Lower Bonbona Township. The new supervisors have the right to opt-in. The township must accept that and forward that one to the insurance company, that they are now members of the group life insurance. And that is why the two new supervisors abstain, because they can't vote for something that is in their self-interest. So if they are permitted by the second-class township code, that's been practiced for a number of years, that's, that's been permitted.
So why did two abstain and three approve?
Because two of them are the two new, two supervisors who are joining the plan. They can't vote to pay themselves money or give themselves a benefit. So they are legally, they recognize a conflict of interest, and the two of them have recognized that, and it's, and they can't vote for something for themselves.
The other three don't have a conflict of interest?
No, they already have the insurance.
So when will they get the insurance? When can they have the insurance?
Tuesday.
The two that have abstained?
The one that's approved by the insurance company. This is what they need to get the insurance, to send this one to the group life insurance plan. The insurance company requires an acceptance by the township that they can be living in the plan. It's just a call out. In the past, it's probably something that I'm just able to, but it's, we need to have a, your normal approval for acceptance. And as I said, just to clarify, the two new supervisors who are receiving the benefit should not vote for themselves.
Okay, Ted's, thank you. Is there any more questions on that topic? Okay, good. So we have a full house here today. So I suspect it's going to be a number of people making comments in the public comments section. Citizens comments, concerns, questions, questions, not only gender, and, you know, basically anything that we have discussed tonight before. So if anybody's got any comments, questions in the back, you have a clock all the way up.
Larry Altman, I can tell, careful Florida.
Good evening, I'm Larry Altman, one thirty-two vote on, for Lower Bonbona. My crowd are open to my panel. So happy to be here, so long guys, and I've been involved in the county for all the years, and involved with the Country Picnic, and now Pipe Fest. And so we're reaching out to Florida for the winter for the first time, and we're refreshing from the most hellacious year that a family's ever imagined, but we're doing great. And so I'm down there, and we're getting ready to send out applications among the community members for our Pipe Fest. So we're having our fifth year, and first four years have been great. And I'm getting ready to send out applications to all the vendors and the entertainment, and this and that and the other. And then, and it's on the website, and I'm in Florida, and I'm getting ready to send applications out, and some people are emailing me, hey, when is it, can we do it? And then it wasn't, then there wasn't a, a link on the website for Pipe Fest, of course, November twelfth, and so I just wanted to know what was up.
So, so should question, what's up?
What's up?
Yeah, okay, so, okay, kind of a broad question. Okay, so there's been a number of discussions over the years, and I've been involved in all of them for the most part, about the Pipe Fest, because before it was the Pipe Fest, it was another event. Before it was added, it's, I think it was over at Con, it was named that, that. So it has evolved over the years. One of the issues that keeps coming up is concerns about residents and owners of businesses and shops on the Pike on Saturday, and they pretty much have got to close. So their concern over the years is, we're losing all this business, but I'm being compensated for it. And the residents who live on the Pike, they're in some apartments, most people may not know it, and, and they really can't get in or out during the Pipe Fest. So the residents and the business owners have come to us and say, it's about time, you want to make a change. It's, what can you do for us? And so I got that information, it came back to me, and then I looked on the, I got an email, or, yeah, it was an email, and it was registered for the Pipe Fest, and it wasn't from a township site, it was from a, I don't know who it was, Lower Bonbona Business Association, maybe, or, or was forwarded on. And then I clicked on the link, and it's like, whoa, we're already registering before we've made any, before we've had any deliberations, especially with the new supervisors, any talk, any concerns about addressing any of the comments that we've heard over the years, and I think it's better. And so when you click on that link, it gives you day, dates, and times and location. So now people are registering at, businesses have registered for the event, and we haven't made any firm decision as to what we're going to do with the location of the event. So I had the township manager pulling down, because I didn't want people to, to be, to register and pay that money, and we made a change, I could make a problem even bigger. So that just happened, I would say just, I guess it happened last week. So that's why I took it down, and that's where we are right now.
Mr. Chairman, there was not a discussion with your fellow supervisors, and for you to take that down, something that has been that successful and growing every year, is, is just appalling to me. The businesses and the township have worked hard to get this where it's at, with the attendance going where it has. Sure, there's some negatives with everything, but the positives, without a doubt, overrun anything that you may have heard. I, I'm just surprised that you took it upon yourself to do that without discussing it with your fellow supervisors. At least you didn't with me, nor, I don't think, with Kathy Huntsinger, so I'm.
Or with the Pipe Fest committee, or the co-chairs of the Pipe Fest committee, or any of the leaders of the Lower Bonbona Business Association.
And Larry Altman is a past citizen of the year of this township. I was just happy to have nominated him to see a resident who on his own has worked this project for years and years. And he's just a shining example of the best citizen that you could have in Lower Bonbona. And, and for him to, to get that type of news, it just, I don't know, I, I said it.
I don't think personally, but I, but I think this group like you here, not because of the two of our updates, but, right? They may have some things to say, but I, I think by any objective, I, yes, that's right. You can't please everybody with everything. But by any objective matter, when you have an event that galvanizes a town, that is the one signature event, but you have thousands of people, and things for people to do, and businesses and this and that, to move it or move the day to a, to such a Sunday, and I heard all these of that. I mean, you know, we've been through this before, and it's, it doesn't make logical sense to so many of us who commit our time of the committee, and so many of the merchants and supporters, because, trust me, it's a small minority, possibly vocal, who don't like it on the block. But it's such a small minority, it boggles the logical mind that I think I have. Been in Florida for a month, it's silly, funny up here, I get it, but it just, it doesn't make sense. I'm not, I know there's people who are going to have to listen to me talk, they probably have some things to say, and I guess I hope they'll listen to what people might want to talk about.
So I just want to make a comment with some of the dead set too, right? So the, the issue is doing harm. If I left the website alone the way it was, and there was any change, now you have a bad situation for the people who have registered to pay. If I take the website down, and we subsequently make no change, there is no harm to anybody who would register, thinking that it's the same. If we make a change and it's, and it's down, if, excuse me, if we make a change and it's not down, then we know about a change, and we're going to tell our people the truth. So the fastest, easiest way to do this was just take that page down, I instructed the staff to do that. And, and that's why I did it in the way it did, and it's the, from my point of view, it's the least harm, given the discussion we need to have as a community, because this hasn't been just this year. This discussion's been going on for quite a while, yes?
Mr. Chairman.
I just wanted to make a comment.
Sure.
I just wanted, just wanted to say, you know, Tessie and I actually do have a meeting planned. So Tessie and I are sitting on the Parks and Rights Subcommittee, and we're meeting the Pipe Fest Subcommittee, Parks and Rights Committee, the Pipe Fest Subcommittee. We can't actually meet all together to discuss anything, it's illegal. So unless we're having a public exercise like we are right now, we don't have the opportunity to all five of us sit down and talk about anything. The executive meetings are only allowed to be about a very small, narrow group of topics, and it would never include the Pipe Fest. So there was no opportunity for us to sit and talk. Mark mentioned, I guess, I'm sorry, Supervisor Greg made the decision that he felt was best, and, and in time that he had to do it. But we haven't, me and Tessie haven't not had the opportunity to get, sit down, we planned to this Saturday.
Can I make a question?
You have to come up to the microphone.
My name is Sherri Christopher, I'm the president of the Lower Bonbona Business Association.
Hi, Sherri.
I think one of the biggest concerns was nothing was said, and it was done, and there was no communication about, conversation about the Pipe Fest. I know a lot of our businesses are involved, and a lot of our businesses are affected. I know there are some businesses that we have in our association that are upset with the Pipe Fest, and some that love it. But I think it's something that needs to be communicated, I think there needs to be a conversation about it. And I just, I don't see any moving forward, I guess it is, like, any, any kind of plans. Like I said, he just found out, you know, I guess a lot of it's just found out because websites went down. So, you know, I mean, the Lower Bonbona Business Association didn't know about it, we weren't informed about it. So I guess that's kind of, I kind of, I guess, a bad, a bad feeling that because it was just done and not, and there was no even say about, when can we get together to talk about it, or, you know. and there was no even say about when can we get together and talk about it, or, you know.
No, I understand. Is there any other comments from the audience?
My name is Dick Tarkin, I live in the 32 Lawson Circle. I'm the best, excuse me, I'm the best for ceremonies for the Lowerway Veterans Association. And we've been standing there for the last four years advertising, promoting our Veterans Day ceremony, which is the closest date to November 12th. I've seen more families came out than I knew lived in this township. There's parents, there's grandparents, there's old children, there's kids in carriages. We don't have, that's, I think a Pike Fest should be on the main road of the town. That's only downtown we have in Lowerway Township. The other roads in this township aren't clean enough to handle the large crowd that comes out every single year. I always brag about our police department, our police officers are out there, but there will still be a chance to interact with the residents of the township, they're friendly matter. Right, Paul? I mean, I'm trying to figure that out. But it's because it's true. And we don't have an opportunity all year long so that the township residents can interface with all the other towns or places. I had no idea that there were so many little children living in this township. And we see them at the Pike Fest. And Pike Fest, that road, for a couple blocks, is it? Three blocks, four blocks, half a mile? But it's, it's packed. And we have a lot of vendors there, we have fire trucks there. I think it's a great event. I don't think there's any other street in this township that's physically capable of handling this Pike Fest. And, you know, they'll express it, but they broke, don't fix it. Are there going to be people who are going to complain? Absolutely, absolutely. But is it the majority? I don't think so. And again, that's a part of the veterans group of Lowerway Township. That's grown the last couple of years. And one of the reasons is because Bill Wanger and I get out there and talk to everybody. And we advertise our Veterans Day ceremony. And last year we, we moved it into the high school because it was so doggone cold. The year before, the 30 mile hour winds and it was, Mike, it was 30 degrees, 35 degrees, it was horrible. And I'm not a young guy, but I'm not as old as a lot of the veterans who come. And we needed to look after our senior veterans. And that was the right thing to do. But this year we have the largest number of attendees at the Lowerway Township Veterans Day ceremony. And I attribute that because we went out and talked to the people. We have a lot of local businesses and carriages, it was great. It was, I think, the superintendent of schools, the visiting district and school district. And they were so thoughtful, we had an indoor, all the restaurants, we had barbecue, we have kind of barbecue, but it helped the appetizers.
Tasted, tasted.
And it was great. And it was inside, nobody froze to death. And the, I think we had the largest number of attendees. And I attribute that to the fact that as a former Marine, we were able to go out and talk to the people and say, look, let's remember our veterans. And I'm an active part of the group. And I would be very upset if the Pike Fest was changed or moved to smaller venues. I feel bad for the people who wait for, it's what, five hours? Is that the... A whole day? It's a whole day. So for one day, if, if you're not happy giving up because it's going to be 3,500 people, it's a lot of people. Shoot some out. And I think we all enjoy it and that's what I have to say. Thank you.
So as one of your constituents. Who are you?
Now you go ahead and introduce yourself.
And who are you, Chris?
Yes, you do.
You have to, is it going to say on the ladder or not?
No, we need to, we are.
One Fox Pond Supreme House PA. Retired supervisor, we know that. We've discussed this issue for many years before the Pike Fest was even started. You know it, you know it, you know it. Everybody here except you guys know it. And how you do too. We have been talking about the issues, going back and forth. Doesn't hurt this person, doesn't hurt that person, this business, that business. But the best, the best of the decision was to make everybody happy. And most people, to get the job done, to make this happen for the public and get a reasonable Pike Fest, if you call it that. And it's had some work very, very well. If you look around there, Amler closes down two times a year. It doesn't seem to stop, it seems to grow and grow and grow. We can do that here as well. And I don't think the people who are objecting to it, including Dick Stanton, by the way, we don't need to have a, we're not to have to stop just because of a few people who might suffer a little bit. For the most good, for the most people, this is what happens. And I think we should continue it going forward. And I hope we don't stop it because it's going to be a great thing going forward. Thank you.
I'll get you next, Kristy.
My name is Jennifer Green, I'm a business owner on Pike, I do a dance workshop. Jennifer Green, do you have a workshop, owner on Pike? We've participated in Pike Fest for the last few years. I easily bring over 300 people down to the Pike. I have four locations, one is here in Lowerland. My families love the Pike. But what I can tell you, because we actually, we thought, is that they had no idea. All the different businesses that were in Lowerland. And they come with their shoulders, with their children, they walk the Pike, they buy things, they spend the day. I also am open that day for classes. So I have closed studios running for in and out from 9:00 to 3:00, we're packed. My people get in and out very easily because of all the planning that the community does and also the community. But I wasn't the first few years, but I still was given that. I give my people places to park. They parked, they walked, they came. Furthermore, in our building, we have a lot of apartments, bathrooms in that area, that I think there's some residents that live there. The lot is open for them to come in and out, they get passes. So there's parking for them, there are not stop places. So it is a very well-oiled machine, it has been a wonderful day. And I hope that we can keep it on the Pike. I guess I'm just a little confused though. If, you know, I understand there's always pros and cons to everything. I'm sure you've gotten all the positive feedback as well as the negative feedback. But if you got negative feedback after the event in September, why wasn't then, all the information then either brought and starting the communication and that conversation in October, November? Why did it wait until January when the application was open? I guess I'm just, I'm a little confused by that.
So you're talking about timing, right? So... That's, that's a little hard to say. So we, we've had a change in the board and we've had a change of how people view things, right? So my experience on the board has been, with Pike Fest in particular, that people who, who have differences of opinion on the event don't always get heard. One of the issues on the, the event is that a lot of the businesses in, that are on the Pike, many, most of them, I would say, are in the business association, not all. But there's a lot of businesses that come in that are a member of the business association who don't have a store here, who don't live here. And, and as a member of the association, apparently they can vote too. So when you're looking at how we're weighing the settlement of the individuals in the business association, the business association is larger in terms of its numbers that are not, it's not, from what I know, are not residents or don't have businesses in the township. So their voice is very loud. But the people who live here, and it's just not the businesses, the people who actually live above some of these places, they don't have a voice. So there's been a discussion about how is everybody going to voice so we have a fair discussion? And that's the thing that people who feel they haven't had a voice, that's what they feel most, that's what they're most concerned with, right? Their, their voices are being drowned, drowned out. So it's good that we're getting all these businesses coming in, that's all well and good. But they're not, if, if they have a physical business, they're not losing money when their business is closed. So I think what we have, and this is a Lowerway Township event. It's not a business association event, it's a township event. It's everybody in the township. And I'm not sure what we paid last year for police and things. Do you know what that ended with? Not off the top of my head, I'm sorry. Yeah, well, it was a lot of money. And, and the township paid that, so it's a balancing act. And, and do we have equal, is everybody hearing everybody? In the sense I got was, no, but not. So this is just, nothing's been canceled, nothing's been changed, nothing's been moved, right? All we're doing right now is putting the brakes on this a little bit so we can have a, a full discussion and we still have time. It's not like we've made a decision and we're slinging the door on anything, that's not the case. This is a discussion, that's what it is.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, you say, this is what we're doing, putting the brakes on it. It's what you did without talking to the full board. It's the full board that should have had this discussion. If there's negatives, we should talk about them, but don't affect something that's, is being publicized already. This was just caught by a huge surprise to me. And somebody said to me, well, I heard the, the negative sides want to move it to Houston Route. Oh, that's great, Houston Route. Could you imagine the businesses that do business on the Pike, the majority of them, how they utilize their facilities going back and forth when they need more supplies and everything else? The point is, this has to be thoroughly discussed with the supervisors and with the business association and not having you as the new chairperson calling the manager and say, taking, taking it off the site. Mark, we, we all make mistakes, that was a major mistake.
And if we really did want an honest discussion, I think it would have properly had been placed on the agenda, which it is not on the agenda tonight. The only reason we're talking about it here tonight is because, number one, the information was taken down from the website. Well, what's that all about? And I was approached by a store owner who told me that a man appeared in her shop, asking, telling her to come to this meeting tonight because they're going to discuss moving Pike Fest off of Bethlehem Pike. Okay, so if we're really serious about a discussion, it seems like, and that the same man is going up and down Bethlehem Pike, having a petition signed, trying to get up Pike Fest, anti-Pike Fest settlement. So here we are, not on the agenda, and we should have had it.
Okay, you can't, you can't. So if you have something to say, you're welcome to say it. Dick, she was, she was asking first, and you'd like to come up and say it.
We're not saying, it's great.
You can change your name.
I have, my name's Shira, I have already gone somewhere, I close every year. This year I had a wedding, so they were nice enough to go park my people from where the dance studios, where we had the park, and go park now. And that's the beginning. I waited in the park not for an hour to go home and watch them dance in the queue. We're not saying to move, to move it, because I think it's nice. I actually walked up Nell Street, people were joking weirdly, I didn't see anybody with a stand from the businesses. I can't blow drunk, people stare at the street. I would come on Sunday because it's, it's neat, it's cool. But Emily closes down, but you can go in and have a game, very easily, it's very accessible. They close all day, it's fun. It's a fun day, you can make it a fun day. You might get double the amount of people on Sunday than a Saturday. We're just saying try to move it, just to see, I don't know if it'll be...
Thank you. Dick? Mike, one more?
No.
Sorry.
Speak up loud. My name is Dick Stanton, 321 Auburn Lane, and the manager of a 805 and a 89 Bethlehem Pike.
Can you speak louder, please?
I manage a 805 and a 89 Bethlehem Pike.
Dick, you can try that.
So this is our opportunity to have a little discussion. The petition is how we're heard. I met with you a year and a half ago, you didn't hear. The board never heard and made any discuss. So this is how we do it. I'm not walking up the streets surreptitiously, I'm engaging in public discourse. This is our response, this is our logic. We're not asking to destroy the Pike Fest, far from it. We're making suggestions that we think will benefit it. Unlike Handler, where you have parallel streets running behind Butler Avenue and cars can still get around, businesses can still operate, we're designing more like Woodpeen, which is not closed down to get back Pike. Rather, they have their fair at Community College. So let me get into it. Yesterday, the Lowerway Business Association sent out an email warning its members of what I'm about to say. The email sent our request, quote, "Maybe an attempt to placate a handful of business owners to believe Pike Fest is disruptive to their business." It goes on to imply that disruption should not be possible because, quote, "Pike Fest brings 4,000 people to the Pike per day to join in and entertain, which may sound uncomfortable, but does not remain to our point." I made, for instance, that to move Pike Fest, quote, "Would undermine the momentum of the event and will guarantee the demise of a widely successful event whose mission is to showcase the businesses along the Pike and elsewhere LGT." I'm here to repeat each and every one of these claims. Let's start in reverse order. The claim of Pike Fest's mission is to showcase the businesses along Pike and elsewhere LGT. To determine if that is valid, it's important to understand that both the makeup of the LGVA membership and the makeup of the vendor population of Pike Fest. Fully one-third of LGVA's membership comes from outside of Lowerway. Many that are in LGA are still not located within the Pike Fest closure zone. In fact, six LGVA members are not even located in Montgomery County. And it's leader of the man, your business is in Handler, is it not? So you're not a Lowerway Business Item. Of the 45 businesses within the closure zone that are open on Saturdays, 13 of them are now members of the LGVA. This organization, while well intentioned, is hard-pressed to argue that it is qualified to make decisions that benefit this group of local businesses. Similarly, the vendors of the Pike Fest are not exactly a showcase of Lowerway Twente businesses. 55% of them are not from the township. Many are the same gnome as the Navy found at the various events in Handler and other nearby towns, and the location matters little to them. The claim that Pike Fest would die if moved has not one shred of data to support such now-landish claim, nor is one single study they conducted to attempt to determine this. We believe, in fact, for reasons that I'll get into shortly, that Pike Fest would thrive far more if our suggestions are implemented. So let's get to the first claim, that there are, quote, "A handful of us who, quote, believe that Pike Fest is disruptive." To get the easiest, to get the easiest point out of the way, we now have years of fallen sales data to prove that Pike Fest is better for our businesses. So bad that many businesses, as you just heard, no longer open on that day. In short, it's crippling. This event, all coming together for the community as a whole, is supposed to highlight and support the businesses on the Pike. In actuality, it does far more harm than good. Now, the relevance to there of being just, quote, "A handful of us" is one that's been heard before. In 2018, former Supervisor Booth told me personally, quote, "If only 10% of the people are bitching, you ignore it," end quote. I'm going to show you that this group is far greater than that 10%, far more than, quote, "A handful." I'm presenting you with a list of signatures. These signatures are residents, business people, and property owners of the Pike Fest closure zone. We all agree that Pike Fest is a wonderful community event and hope that it will continue if some of us even participate in it. However, the closing of Bethlehem Pike has a negative impact on our businesses and our home lives. Many of our clients or customers must drive with us, whether due to the type of product they will be taking home or to the type of service we provide, that based on their age or physical condition, they cannot walk that far to obtain. This petition attempted to pull every business that could be identified in enclosures that operates on Saturdays. In short, every business affected either positively or negatively by the Pike Fest, as well as the residents in this area. Many of us are not members of the LGVA, and we should not have to pay to join an organization simply to voice our objection to a disruptive activity. Our voices must count more than that of the LGVA. And we implore you to please hear us, as unlike the majority of LGVA members, we are all here in enclosures now. Saturdays are typically very busy days for our businesses, particularly those in September. Saturdays are typically very busy days for our businesses, particularly those in September, when nearly all of our neighbors have stopped vacationing or going to the shore. Closing the Pike on Saturday is akin to taking away an incredible amount of our business for the week, in some cases we're averaging losing five figures on this day every year. We simply cannot afford this, and with the high amount of vacancies that still remain in the area, Lower Gwinnett cannot afford to lose us either. And please keep in mind, even the non-residents among us pay a significant amount of taxes to LGA. We are hair salons, nail salons, and florists who cannot serve weddings on a September Saturday. We are healthcare providers whose patients are elderly and not sufficiently ambulatory to make the trek hard business with the road closed. We are a beer distributor who cannot sell beer on football weekend because absolutely no one is carrying a case of beer half a mile or more back to their car. This is revenue that is lost, not delayed. For the residents among us, the Pike Fest prevents direct access to our homes. Many of us have young children, they need to be swatted around our activities, play dates, business with relatives, et cetera, and this becomes more difficult when we cannot drive to and from our apartments. And certainly no one may visit us, including providers of Daysday. One year there was a pregnant resident in her third trimester. It also makes it harder for those of us who have to work those days. Finally, for many of us, this is a day off where we would normally shop for groceries, get our dry cleaning, do other errands, which we can't do without being able to drive to and from home. A suggestion regarding this was made to then-supervisor Chair Hudson in 2018, and we are hopeful that you will now accept this. Not only will it benefit us by allowing us to handle businesses as usual, it will also benefit Pike Fest as a whole in many substantial ways. That suggestion is to move the Pike Fest to the school campus, where it can operate much in the same way as July for the carnival. The benefits of this are many. First, our main thoroughfare can remain open for the convenience of residents, the use of local businesses, and the safety of faster access for emergency vehicles on the go, while signs can easily point patrons to the Pike Fest just around the corner. Second, far more people would likely attend, as ample parking is available along both Baker Road and Knight Road, and this closer parking would allow more elderly and more parents with infants to attend. There was talk in 2018 of trying to have a concert. The stadium at the high school would be a natural venue for this, immediately adjacent to all of the other activities and their seating. The high school gyms and the car parks between them provide something sorely lacking in Pike Fest, a rain venue. Can you honestly say you weren't worried about rain last year? And the year before, there was an imminent threat that parking in Florence could have killed the whole event. Finally, you already know how well-horshened the summer events already held there, the supervisor brand has been active and running for years. Again, we urge you in the strongest terms to please relocate Pike Fest starting this year, both for our sake and the sake of the event itself. You'll see that of the 45 businesses identified that are within Pike Fest closure area and are open on Saturdays, nine abstained where no decision makers were available, 11 supported Pike Fest in its current location, but 25 have signed this petition asking for it to be moved. That's 70% of the businesses have voiced an opinion. Add that to the seven apartments, and that's an overwhelming majority. This is far more than Supervisor Booth's 10%, and far more than the LGVA's claim, quote, "handful." The LGVA has no right to impose its will on our businesses and home lives. There is a better alternative, moving it would neither, quote, "Under my roman and," nor, quote, "Guarantee the demise of the Pike Fest." These are ludicrous claims that show both lack of strategic thinking, as well as a failure to understand the way in which our services are consumed. Pike Fest can be even more successful if our suggestions are implemented. Please hear our voices on this matter. End copies for all of you.
Thank you. Ross, can you give me another question? You got the wrong seat.
My name's Russell Beersley, 5001 East Main, Upper Gwinnett. I actually was going to talk about, seven, eight years ago, when we were all getting together, talking about how we could make this more community, what the kinds of things we can do to bring out the residents of Lower Gwinnett so they get to know each other, and start developing some, you know, some kind of family orientation in this community. I think from that started the sidewalks and the daylilies and the fences, and the Business Association actually came out of that. I thought it was a great idea, and just, and once that was done, I was off that, and just watching it come together seemed great. I know we were all very, very jealous of Ambler and what they had going for, and we were all knocking our heads against the wall for years and years and years, but the thing of, how do we bring that to Lower Gwinnett? Okay, so I, you know, I thought this was a big success, it seemed like it was, not to mention all the parents, grandparents, kids, and all the dogs, but, you know, it seemed like it had accomplished everything we had wanted it to. So I'm concerned now, after hearing this report, that there's a, and I knew there was some opposition early on, but it did seem like it was a small hand in the mouth. But, you know, the one thing we can't do is to address these programs together. I mean, it's our, it's our township, it's our community, and if we have problems, then I would expect that we would all be very transparent in terms of bringing those up and sharing with us in due time, so that we can see it on the agenda and come and discuss it. Regardless of what happens, I think one of the key things in listening to, is it Mr. Stanton? Was that in terms of a former business guy and a strategic thinker, you don't insult the jury, you know? You don't insult the people you're trying to communicate with. So I'm not, not to do that, but one of my thoughts was, how do you get the people who invest in all their time, hearts, and minds in this thing to get aware of this, to get excited about considering moving it? Because it may be a Lower Gwinnett board property, but without the community, it doesn't exist, and without the support, and all the people who put in the hard work and hours, and I know the first, and I don't know the names, but the first two women that started this thing really put a tremendous amount of effort into it, and deserve a lot of credit for getting off the ground. So my concern is if, you know, let's talk about options, let's see if we can get the people who are doing all the work that are pulling this off, because with all due respect, I don't think it's a lot of people up here that are doing the grunt work, if it is grunt work. It's tough, I know I've done chef of the burbs for 10 years, and I know it's like herding cats, getting that together. Okay, so I understand how hard it is. So we need to figure this out, and we need to have a meeting. Looks like we're having a meeting now, so if we can't have another meeting for 10 days, two weeks, that's not going to help in terms of bookings and all the logistics that go into pulling ourselves out like this. So my only point is, we need to work together on this, and not keep other people doing things that we don't like.
Thank you. Is there any more comments?
Yes.
From the audience, please.
Lori Goodman, I am born in one, I also own 1005 North Bethlehem Pike, and I am one of the business owners. And five years ago, when they told me about Pike Fest, there was nobody in opposition for to this event than me. But I decided I was going to figure out how to make it work for my business. I was in a little shopping center, that really was a dead shopping center. So I decided to take all my old shoes and put them on sale and have a tent sale, and people flopped, they flopped to my business. Because I decided to make Pike Fest work for me, and that's what I find the businesses, the naysayers. And by the way, Mr. Stanton never came to my business to ask if I was for or against Pike Fest. Nobody came to me. So I built it, and then when I was still in a shopping center, I got my next-door neighbor, who owned a boutique, who had zero business, I never saw a solo in her business, they said, "Come out, come to Pike Fest." Whole people started coming to her table and started walking in her store. If you want it to work, it will work. If you're going to be a naysayer, it is a naysayer. If they are saying they are losing all this money, show me the money. I made double what I make on a Saturday during Pike Fest last year. I took advantage of it, I have my own property now. I put two food trucks on my property, I sponsored a 5K race, we had 130 people. It was a success, we had a lot of fun. And if you make it that way, you will have the business. If these businesses all tell me, "I'm losing business, I'm losing business," but they don't want to put out, and they say they lose business, show me that you're losing the business. Show me. If you're really losing five figures, that's a lot of money, show it to me. I will show you that I doubled my business during Pike Fest. And it is a wonderful event. These little shopping centers, people don't know who's in these shopping centers. I've been in Lower Gwinnett Township for 21 years. 19 of those years, I was in two shopping centers. I cannot tell you how many people in the past year are coming to my store and had no idea I was even there, none. I've got a big sign now and a great parking lot, but Pike Fest helps all this. They bring people to the center. When people need shoes, I say, "I don't have shoes, I have sneakers, go to Benjamin Level, where's that?" It's in the shopping center next door, where's that? But Pike Fest, people are now walking on the Pike, they see the businesses. Invite them into your business. I understand this rougher beauty salon, it's one day. I will guarantee you, in Lower Gwinnett Township, at least one day a year, you lose power. You are out of business that day. So either make it work, because the township needs it. We need someone buying Andy's diner, we need someone developing the Pike diner. If you can't get people here to this township and make it look nice, you're going to have a lot of empty places. My old next-door neighbor, Taste of Italy, has been vacant now for three years. But if you get people here, and you see a vibrant area and a vibrant center, they will want to come. That's all I can say.
I'm one of the cat herds, I'm one of the volunteers for Larry. And this year, after Pike Fest 2019, I approached Larry and said to him, "I'd like to help you, I'd like to co-chair with you, because this is such a great event for our township." I honestly, though, didn't know anything about the politics of what's going on, who said what, who did what. What I saw was a person that was dedicated to the township and doing such great work, so I wanted to be part of it. And honestly, at an event like this, you do have to start the day after the event, you have to, because vendors sign up for other things. And yes, there is a variety of Lower Gwinnett businesses and vendors, but that's what we tried to do, to bring variety to it, so that there's something for everybody that was there. And I think Larry, you don't know how many different festivals and things that Larry went to, putting our car down for the Pike Fest, what he's done for this. So we had to start right away, as soon as Larry and I talked with Supervisor Hudson, we, this is in this period of 2019, because it's right afterwards, we started right away. You have to get your forms ready, you have to get your, you know, the sponsorships, you have to do it right away. So when we put it, when the information was up, we were just rolling along like it always was. I have to tell you, Chairman, I was devastated that was down. I was hurt, because no one told me, no one told me. And I do have a meeting set up, but that was after the fact. And I was hurt, and honestly, I feel like I don't want to do it, but I would do that for Larry, and I'd love to the committee. So I feel that the committee should have been told, and it should have been discussed with us. And if there's problems, let's talk about it, let's do something about it. Can we accommodate people? Can we do more things? Because I think we would, I think we would really do that, but we didn't, we don't know, we did not know that. So I know everybody's heard all this, but I felt like, as his co-chair this year, I had to come up and say something, so thank you.
Hi, everybody, thank you to the board, it's been a great meeting. I'm Dana Harbison, I rent up property, I was five years at one property, and I was going to move out of the township because of the Pike Fest, but luckily for you guys, the people convinced me to give it a try, because it looked up in open discussion. So the first two years I was here, everyone said, "God, join the Business Association," and they mean here, and this and that, and blah, it was great. The second year in, we're having this Pike Fest, it's great, here, just pay more money, and, well, I have a business, where people have to get in who are injured and in pain, I can only come on Saturdays, and I'm going to have to explain to them that they have to do that, or not come. So basically, that's what happened. My second year, I did join the Business Association, because I was totally confused when I moved to this township, because I came from over, I guess it was colonial township, they didn't have anything like this. So I was a little confused, because the Business Association, is it the board? Is it separate? Is it the same? You know, I just didn't understand. So in that second year, when I was approached, I immediately objected, because I said, "This is no good for me, I can't do this, because I can't do any business, I can't make any money." And a lot of my business is on Saturdays, so I brought an existing business of 10 years, where I have patients who knew they can come to me Saturdays, suddenly they came to me that Saturday. So I did not join the Business Association the third year that I was here, and I have not joined since. I've been approached a couple of times by the people that have come to my office, I always say the same thing, "What's happening to that Pike Fest?" Because, you see, I can't do business, I lose money, I lose patients, because they're going to maybe go somewhere else, maybe not, because I can't be open. Yes, I know it's one day a year, but I can't make money.
Excuse me, could you tell us what your business is?
Oh, I'm an acupuncturist, so I'm in the medical, I'm in the medical field. Basically, pain, people in pain, they certainly are not walking, you know, about a mile, a half mile, whatever it is. Anyway, so I would like to see the venue moved, I don't necessarily think it needs to be canceled, I don't think anybody's asking that, but I think move to Sunday, keep it on the Pike possibly, or move it to that parking lot. I mean, I live over in Blue Bell, so the things that they moved to the, like the fire expo and all these things that they moved over to the college are fantastic, very well attended, there's parking, encourage lots of people. My understanding of moving it over by that high school is you could be up and down Knight Road, so there still would be that walking venue, you could have people set up with your tables and whatever, and you could have that possible rain event situation where you could move inside. And also the stadium, you know, you could have your, you probably have that, you had a contract, you probably have an advice one. So anyway, I'm in favor of making some kind of change and consideration, and I'll tell you what, I would consider joining maybe the Business Association if they stop representing themselves as the township. So when I hear that you took that website down, I mean, I think they were pretty lucky that you had that website up there. It should, I think, have its own individual website, because maybe the expenses, Mark, you mentioned something about the cost to have the police, and, you know, what are their costs? So I think the discussion needs to address all of that analysis, the loss of business analysis, I mean, if you don't even go to have the money, I got the money, I don't make money on that day, I lose business.
Can I just, can I just say something?
No.
That's it, I'm done.
Okay. Could you come back up, please? Say your name.
Jared Christopher, I'm president of Lower Gwinnett Business Association. There just needs to be a clarification, Lower Gwinnett Business Association does not run the Pike Fest. A lot of people think it does, it does not. The committee, the Pike Fest committee, runs the Pike Fest. There are businesses that are in Lower Gwinnett Business Association that do help run the Pike Fest, but it is not a Lower Gwinnett Business Association Pike Fest. It is not, it is not our event. Another thing is, is that the Business Association is separate from the township, we have our own business website, and our whole goal is to promote businesses in Lower Gwinnett. So that's been a lot of confusion. So it's lowergwinnett.biz is, I think our org is the website, but as one of us will wind it out for you, but there's so many websites, it's like so confusing. So, but I just wanted to clarify, because a lot of people think that we are at the Pike Fest and we're not.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Hi, I'm Penny Woolswick, I'm here representing Village Pharmacy, let me try and remember that. First, I would like to thank people like Dick Stanton, who have stuck with small business, they have not forgotten the businesses on the Pike. Plenty of opportunity to go somewhere else, but there's many faces here, I see that our customers are ours, and I'm thanking for now promoting business on the Pike, and I think everybody here should be doing that, which is what Pike Fest was all about, to bring... to bring awareness to the Pike. I am very sorry for people who lose business. I'd love to see conversation, to see how we can make business come in. Quite honestly, Village Pharmacy, it isn't a great day for us. Everybody's down on the Pike. Last year was a little better, but we do bounce back coupons. So I have coupons. I saved them off from last year. The number of coupons I got back in noted who was a brand-new customer for our store, where they will sign them up for points. There are ways you can work around some of this. I think one of the things that has been missed in this is, A, we need to talk to the committee to find, I've been on Pike Fest from the beginning. I do not want to reinvent the wheel. I don't have the time to do it. A, you can't call it Pike Fest, it's not Pike Fest. You're still going to need police and firemen and everything else. It's still a cost. Talk to businesses. Are they still going to want to support and pay to be a sponsor of Pike Fest if it's not on the Pike? You're asking them to put out money for a noun and a noun to another unknown. Are you going to make money? Are you going to get people? So you have to go to every single business and try and resell them on the fact that you're going to move it. The Sunday conversations come up. It is, you've got church, you've got sporting events. It's equal season. We don't know what the schedule is. I think it's going to hurt people. On a Saturday, you're getting them right from sporting event, and they're going to come out. I just think, again, it should have happened right at the last Pike Fest, because we are going to be up against a wall. If you've been on the committee and you've worked with it, you know how many hours go into getting people there. And the longer this is delayed, the less likely we are to have people that are going to go to other venues. They are not going to care. And you now have to resell them of whether they want to come out. They knew there were 4,000 people next year. How many are they going to be next year? So I absolutely think there needs to be more conversation. But I think you're not looking at the bigger picture of how many businesses that have supported it are going to keep supporting it. Because I know it's going to be a really hard sell for me to tell the boss. Guess what? They want us to pay how much money to reinvent the whole thing again. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Bill, Bill Tovay, from Motivate Fitness. And Pike Fest has been great for us. Every year, someone comes, a handful of people come up with us and still say, "We didn't know you were here." So they fly down to Pike Fest, they don't know we're here. Pike Fest has been incredible for us. I understand a lot of businesses, it does hurt. So what I'd like to propose to get this going is, set up a date within the next couple of weeks to have, Dick had plenty of people that seemed to be against it. Let's invite them on Motivate Fitness. We'll pick a night, you and I can talk about this. We'll pick a night, have all these people that are against Pike Fest and all the people that are for it, and come in, we'll have a meeting, and try to figure this out. Because it doesn't make sense to move it, because then, like I said, it's not Pike Fest. And that's the heart of the city, right? That's the town square. We have to have it there. So I think we need to find a way to accommodate everybody, and I think we can do that. So I'd motion to. I wouldn't have to invite yours, anybody, if we decided.
I'll have to do it before you move off the Pike Fest.
We are happy to announce we are moving off the Pike, but it doesn't change the fact that we still, that we still, that we still think the Pike is the spot to be for this. I still wouldn't have it on the point in Hancock Road. I don't even know where that is. So I wouldn't have to offer that up to.
Sorry, sorry. We need your name for the record.
Sure. Name's Bill, T O K, M A J, I A N. Motivate Fitness. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? We need to speak.
Carol Jones, 390, and an adult, and a lady. I go to the Pike Fest every year, and I do an incredible job there. I really do enjoy the Pike Fest, because it's a festival. What I'm really concerned about right now is, what Lady just said, that this is about enhancing the businesses from along the Pike, or wouldn't be a Pike Festival. What happened to the Long One and Country Picnic that we started out with, that was for the residents of Lower Gwinnett? So I'm sitting here for the last half an hour, 40 minutes, and we're hearing about the businesses. And, you know, it's about the businesses along the Pike, the businesses along the Pike. But is this supposed to be about the businesses along the Pike if the Lower Gwinnett Business Association is not a part of Lower Gwinnett, and Lower Gwinnett is paying for this, and the residents of Long One and Township? Where are we getting out of this? And I'm there every year. I mean, when it was at Clements, out in the yard, where we had hot dogs and hamburgers, when it moved down to the Pennant Woods, and then to the Pike Fest. It is growing, but what is it becoming right now? Because I own a business, and, you know, congratulations to all of you who do, but this is Long One and residents, and this is Long One and residents' money that's being paid to grow businesses. But what do the residents of Lower Gwinnett get out of it? One of the issues that I have with it being on the Pike, which I do, I like the Pike Festival, but it is just nowhere near handicap accessible. They have porta potties out there that handicap people can't use. They're half apart, you know, way far away. And it does, and there's a lot of residents that aren't able to participate. Now, I actually have a booth out there every single year too, so we're talking to people. And you know how it's grown to a lot. A lot of these people are not from Lower Gwinnett. You know, they just come because, like Amber and other places, it's a festival, and they're enjoying the festival. So are we doing this to support Lower Gwinnett Business Association? Are we doing this for, to have a program or something for the residents of Lower Gwinnett, a Long One and Township? Or, you know, what is this actually about? What's this going to be? And why should the township be even, you know, like participating or whatever, of growing that part of the business if it's supposed to be Lower Gwinnett Residents Township Day? So I think when you start talking about the businesses getting together every day, and there's people that do live around, those are Lower Gwinnett residents that live up and down the corridor, and that in their apartments, and that can't get in and out. There's people that can't get to there, because they can't, they can't walk to get to there. And it's so, it's, when they mentioned having it out in front of the high school, whatever, I thought that was a great idea. When you look at the Fourth of July, you see all the people that walk from in that area, people that live in Lower Gwinnett area that can just walk and can be there. So it's a very accessible place to the residents. So is this about the businesses that are here in Lower Gwinnett, or is it about the residents of Lower Gwinnett? They actually venue or plan it. I think we need to consider that as we have the conversation, because maybe they should even need to say that.
So I just want to comment to that. We do have, the Pike Fest does have a mission statement that they formulated when the event was first hatched. And Larry, you might have to help me out here. The mission is to bring residents, our township staff, the super elected officials, et cetera, together while promoting the businesses along Bethlehem Pike. So it's not solely geared towards that. But like I said, when the Pike Fest did come into existence, it was about the same time that Lower Gwinnett Business Association came into existence, was in its.
So how did it get combined with Long One and residents and our country picnic? And?
Well, the country picnic was held back in Penland Woods for many years, as you know. It was a small event, and it was just becoming really lackluster. It's hidden back there. It's kind of lost its luster and its allure. And we thought it would be a good idea to change it up. The committee always wanted to shut down Bethlehem Pike. We didn't know if we would be able to shut down Bethlehem Pike. And we researched it, our police department, and we were able to do it. And Patty, Donna, someone had mentioned, I think Rusty, you mentioned them. They really hidden out of the park that first year. Again, the second year, and it's been growing consistently. I mean, we had 127 vendors last year. The year before that, it was around 100. And the year before that, it was about 90. And it's swelling with some participants that come from Lower Gwinnett Township. And all the institutions in the township. You've got the high school with the robotics team. You've got the middle school with the marching band. You've got all the Gwinnett, the university, the high school, the elementary school. We have our police department that comes out, our emergency services bring out their big trucks. So it really is community.
Exactly.
And that's what Pike Fest is.
Right. So there's all everyone else's businesses. And here tonight is the business.
Yeah, and I can see how you would. It's a little bit sweetie, but it's not, like, it's not solely, it's not run by the Lower Gwinnett Business Association, and it's not solely about them. It's about Lower Gwinnett Township. And it really is, has become, thanks to all this hard work from the volunteers, from the businesses, and from everybody, all the families, and the young children, and pets, and everything that come out, to give our premier community event. It's a place annually, year after year. And it's so kind of.
So why does it have to be on the Pike?
Because it's the Pike Fest.
The Pike Fest.
The country picnic.
It's died, it died, died.
So that's what I'm saying, is that it has to be on the Pike, because that puts respect. It's just.
No, it's not just for the businesses. Businesses, well, for example, our first, she was our first commentator, from Do Dance Workshop. She brings out all of her students, dancers, from each four locations. Each one of those students bring their family members. So like she said, she's bringing about $200, $300 on people, onto the Pike. As is the case with the Visiting Middle School Marching Band. We've got that whole band, so their families come out. So it's a snowball of effect where we really, it just blossoms into wonderful community day that day, and year after year. And for, you know, someone mentioned the old midage, but it's not growth. Why fix it? I just, I understand that people struggle, and there are businesses that struggle. And I will note that these businesses that aren't happy with it, feel that they take a hit for the day, two years in 2018, we heard that. We heard that plea. And the committee put together a special workshop, a PowerPoint special workshop, to help these businesses come on in. We'll help you come up with ideas of how you can take advantage of these 4,000 people on Bethlehem Pike that normally aren't there and certainly don't know your business. You can even have a wait for that, and no one showed up.
Happened to our tissues.
No one showed up for that. So just saying that. And as long as that's a possibility for the residents, they have special parking passes.
So for the later?
To park in your lot. I don't know, we have to ask our, do you know the answer to that?
There's a special parking lot.
Special, yeah. I mean, we do.
It's on the Pike.
It's on the Pike.
It's right on the Pike. It's on the Pike. Where is it?
There's multiple parking lots that are.
Key Bank is down this end. What if you want to go to the other?
It's not, it's not. So there's no.
That's it.
There's multiple parking lots that are right there, right where they need to park. I mean, it's very well planned out.
I understand that, and I appreciate all the work that you've put into it. But we're hearing a lot about businesses, and I just think we need to hear about the residents of Lower Gwinnett, and also what's happening. Because I thought this was just, you know, was something for the residents of Lower Gwinnett, and now it's starting to, now it's turning into, and like you said, and the high school, and everyone else, you know, everyone.
That's been here.
So now it's turning into, you know, what's happening with the business and enhance the business. And I did not think that should be Pike Fest. To enhance, like the lady just said, to enhance or promote the businesses that are in Lower Gwinnett. It's a community event for all the people, you know, in Lower Gwinnett, particularly the residents of Lower Gwinnett, since we're the ones who are there built for them.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Heather Burt, E E R T, 433 Norma Road, in Ampler, Lower Gwinnett. I've been a part of the Pike Fest, I believe, from the beginning. It wasn't necessarily voluntary, but the committee kind of recruited me. I've been a resident for these 21 years in March. I am a volunteer on the committee. I have a very busy life, but I decided to be a part of this because I love the community. And I felt like, as a resident, that I wanted to become more involved. And so this is how I decided to do that in my free time. And to speak to the resident part is your question. I think our original vision of why we were doing this was because we really wanted to do something more for the residents. I never attended the country picnic. I didn't even know where it was, if I had to be really honest with you. I couldn't have found it if you'd given me a map, to be honest with you. And so I think when we were really talking about it, we thought, you know, why we thought about the Pike was because, honestly, to Hillary's point, was because honestly, to Hillary's point, I didn't know who some of these businesses were. And so I started walking up and down the pipe. And that first year, I was like, "Oh my gosh, these are places that I never knew existed, and I have lived here for so long." And so I think that's some of the beauty of bringing, when you do a collaboration, of bringing businesses and residents and the township together. And that was sort of the original vision of doing this. And to see this grow over the last years is what the goal was. And I think that, as a resident, has been the most amazing thing, is when you come out and you see a day, and you see these kids kind of running around in the bouncy houses, and you see parents just being able to relax and have fun with their kids, and see people from all over the place, and see the vans, and those kind of things. And so it's not just about businesses. It's about the ability for the businesses to be able to showcase what they've been doing. And I appreciate, gosh, you know, when people have to close, I was kind of mixed. I'm not business owner. I'm a social worker, child worker, so I get that, that's really hard. But I think we did try and have different ways that businesses, so when I hear pennies talk about that aspect, we talked about maybe doing different ways that you could bring people back into your businesses. I wonder about a hairspray, maybe, I don't know, another hairspray that is open, you know, maybe you could use your space for things like that. Those are some very good things that I think about. But, you know, I think the goal is to grow the community, and have the community be able to come together for one day. This world is really, and so how do we have people come together? I think that's really what the Pike Fest was trying to do. My concern, if you move it to a different space for a different day, is it's going to be really deflating for the community. Like, I didn't even know about this until I saw a social meeting. And I've been on this committee for a long time. And I thought, "What?" Like, I didn't even know about this meeting, honestly, until last night.
It wasn't on the agenda, it's my...
And I understand it, but I saw about it from the Ampler alert. And then I was like, "What the heck's going on?" And so I think, you know, that's what's hard. And so I would just say, you know, and I appreciate you have to hear both sides, like, I'm a social worker, so I get all about that, right? I lead staff of seven people. So I get all that. And so I love your idea of meeting at Motive, I think that's great. Let's bring people, let's bring it together and let's figure it out. I think as a committee, we would certainly want to do that. We want to hear people, we want to figure it out. I have to tell you, like, if you're going to move it and have to redo it all, I think there's a number of us on the committee that would say, "I don't know that we have the energy to do that. I have a full life, three kids, a senior in high school, like, through college doors. I don't know if I have the energy to do that." But I think you would want to talk to the residents, right? Like, I appreciate hearing what you're saying about handicap access and stuff like that. We need to hear that. Like, that's information that we need to hear, because then we need more handicapped fortifieds, and we need to know about parking and those kind of things. That's good information for us, having members. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kim Jaketh, 413 Cedar Lane. I respect the opinion of the lady who spoke about the residents being primary objectives for this event. And businesses are essential part of it, but they're not the ones who supervise, who should be considering in making their decisions, in my opinion, because this is a community event. And anybody who used to attend the fair over at Pendleton Woods, and now attends these events, cannot deny the tremendous increase in participants and energy. And that's due to the hard work of the committee led by Larry Altman. And I would think that the committee, at this point, the timing of this decision to put a hold on things based upon what I know they face in signing vendors up early, is disloyal to the work that they have done for the last four or five years. And so I can see where the concerns of certain businesses need to be heard, but they can be heard for next year's decision. And that process should start soon about next year's decision, and meeting 2021. I think the performance of the committee that runs the event, and the results that they get, demand that the board respect that, and respect the hard work they've done. And let this continue for this year, and get aboard the businesses that have a gripe. Because in an event this big, some businesses are going to really make that, some aren't. But as everybody, as several people said, they were invited to come to an event to help them adjust their approach to it, to help their businesses, and no one showed up. So, that's all meant. And I don't think they should get special treatment now, in terms of this scheduled planning, to hold it. My suggestion would be the board side tonight to move ahead with allowing the program to go on this year, and study it for 2021. Thank you.
All right, once again, partnership for 2021 Court. And I've participated for many years, and I appreciate everything Larry's done. I have had booths, when I sold Marshmallow Shooters with my son, back in Pendleton Woods, we sold out though. Now, on E H C, we've got a booth where it's giving away scrapers responding to the pipe. I only want to say, whether the actions of the board were ham-handed, inappropriate, but this is the first time I had a forum like this, where everyone could express their opinions. I don't think we've had something like this. And I just want to say, this is what it's all about, people. Remember to come together and let different voices be heard together in a peaceful, calm way. Get your ideas. I don't think the board would have heard all these opinions, otherwise. Appreciate everybody who came in, and I think it's great that we had a meeting. I was over in St. Joseph's, saying, "Do you need to switch places at home?" Coming together. And I just want to point out, I think, we all know what Larry's done. We know ways to move this forward, and have everyone's opinion heard. I just appreciate that we have this forum to bring these voices forward and to listen to them. That's all.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
I'm Bob Jankey from 3 Haycroft, and I'm a forty-year resident of Lowerland. I guess I'd like to, it appears that the questions are slowing now a bit. I'd like to bring it back to the beginning, which was a question of what's going on. What I heard in the way of the explanation of what is going on to the website was, it sounds like there were a few people that you felt were not being heard. By my count of what I heard here, there might be a hundred there, but still, that's people that deserve to be heard. And I think we've heard a lot of suggestions on how to hear those people going forward. I think as a community, we have to recognize that the position that we're in right now is that if we go as much as another few days without continuing the work that the committee has already started on, or reinstating the work that the committee has already started on, the whole thing begins to fall apart and goes away. Now, that's almost like a pocket veto, perhaps, but I guess I'd like to bring this back to the beginning by asking the question, are you going to reinstate the information on the website so that the committee can continue? Because if we put this off another month till the next meeting, I don't know, maybe Larry or one of the other people can talk to it, but I really fear that we have nothing left of Pike Fest then. And it has de facto gone left. So, to bring it back, what is going to be done relative to the application and the information that was on the website? Will that be reinstated?
Well, it's definitely going to be reinstated, but I think your question is, when will we do that? And the answer is, I don't have it.
Well, when all the comments are done, I think it'd be a nice time, we're the supervisors, to comment about the comments that we've heard. I don't know if you're the last gentleman or lady to be heard.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be real quick, I promise. Chris, yeah? Chris Solow, 533 Vista Road. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the last board meeting, it was on the agenda where we appointed these folks to the Pike Fest committee, correct? Right? Okay, so what, were they given any direction that day, or were they expected to sit on their hands between then and now? You see what I'm saying? I mean, we got people who are eager, they volunteer, they come out. And again, there's no reason not to continue with what's always been happening. So, what they did was, again, business as usual. And that's the point I want to make.
Do you agree with your comment? Any more comments? Ms. Terri Root?
I'm Norrie, and I own our Sinister Gallery over on the Pike. It's our fortieth anniversary this year, my personal twentieth, and I really had a sleepy evening in the conference.
Ms., could we, could you state your name?
Can you spell your last name?
My name is B O R D E N.
B O R D E N?
Yes. So Pike Fest is a wonderful, lovely thing, brings out lots of people, but it needs work. And if I'm not, the businesses who have a problem with it are running up against a wall of negativity that should not be happening. I'm sitting in front of you all of negativity, unfortunately. I'm hearing it behind me every time someone says, "It's not working for me." Instead of being, "How can we help you?", you're wrong. We, I didn't need the help.
You did, and nobody came to the meeting.
I was not aware of the meeting, and for the two years before that, we were in the north. So I think a lot of us have a bad taste in money. And it's not just me losing the business, like, I had stuff out in the parking lot, I had free kids' activities. You can't see me. There's a wall of tents, and then a wall of cars behind a tent for the people that unload. And I've asked multiple times to be accommodated.
Did you say for a hundred bucks, you didn't see it because you didn't have the tent on the Pike?
I can't be at two places at once, I have people in my store.
Excuse me, we have a process here tonight, one person at a time.
I mean, it's not just me as a business losing money, it's me saying to my employees, "I'm sorry, this year we're closing, I can't pay you today." I would normally have two employees on that day, so for me, if there's twenty-five employees, businesses that have a problem with this Pike Fest, the way it is, Pike Fest in general, just the way that it's running. If I have two employees, if everybody has two employees, that's one seventy-five, which you have a lot more than two employees, and you have to say, "Sorry, I can't pay you today." These are not high wage jobs, so people can just say, "Okay, no problem, I'll just, you know, go to Pike Fest and hang out, spend money, I'm not going to pay today." Your salon, you're willing to employ, same thing. So that's all we're saying, is we need a little bit of accommodation. That's why there was complaints about Pike Fest two, four, and we're not saying, "Hey, let's ruin this community event." It's not what it's about. We just need to work together to come up with better solutions for these businesses who are being negatively affected.
Any more comments? Thank you. Ed Brandt, you mentioned that you'd like to say a few things.
Well, I think this was beneficial to the supervisors, for the people that are here, for the business owners, for everybody. But I'll relate back to one of the lady's comments, was there's no way that this Pike Fest can not be scheduled for 2020, and keep it on the schedule. And don't let any of the good constructive comments that have come up be put aside. What I'm saying is, let 2020 stay on the books, and let the supervisors with the subcommittee, the Pike Fest committee, listen to the people that have mentioned that it's a negative for their business, to see how we can turn that around, if any way we can. There, it's been too positive, it's been growing every year. So I think, from what I understand, the committee has had some meetings that they publicized for asking for the business people to come out to discuss it, and nobody showed up. Well, evidently, some of the businesses weren't aware of that, so that has to have another vetting. But I am in favor of not canceling the 2020, and to have a process during 2020 to address the Pike Fest for 2021, to make it better, or do whatever the majority, the committee and the township wants. That's, I put that in the form of a motion, and I want to thank everybody that have come out and given the courtesy to hear both sides, which we've heard tonight. And you, every one of you has listened to one another. So let's move on, and let's take notes of what was said, and let's address it during the course of 2020 for 2021, and not affect 2020. The committee just cannot survive if we put this aside. So I'm making that in form of a motion to my fellow supervisors, that we do what I just said.
And what was that?
Please pardon me?
Your motion is...
My motion is to not affect 2020, to keep it on, and that...
Keep it on the Pike?
On the Pike, as it is, but to have a subcommittee of the supervisors meet with and attend the meetings of the Pike Fest, when they invite the businesses that feel that they're being hurt because of the Pike Fest, and what we can do to improve upon that. One thing that I do want to add is the fact that if you ask our police department, they have a booth there, and they reach out to our residents. And let me tell you, that's the most popular time for them to communicate with our residents. And it's very, if we had our chief discuss it, he'll tell you that. But I met with them myself, and it's just amazing. I mean, having little kids come up and talk to the police, get their picture taken and so forth. So, I've said enough, but I did put it in a form of a motion to my fellow supervisors. I hope there's a second, and I hope there's a majority. But at the same time, move on also to the plan to hear everybody that was heard tonight.
So, just so I understand, Ed, you have a motion?
Yes.
To leave the date and location where it is right now?
For 2020.
2020. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, we have a negative, so, Ed Brandt, you're...
Definitely in favor.
Okay, Kathy Hunsinger?
Yes, I'm in favor of, what is the date, September 12th, on Bethlehem Pike.
Okay, Danielle?
I'm opposed to what Supervisor Brandt has suggested, not saying that...
What would you change, if you want me to change the motion?
Mr. Brandt, we have a motion, we're trying to move on.
Okay, go ahead.
So don't vote yes, save.
Okay. Tessie?
I'm going to have to vote no, just simply because I don't have all the information yet that I need to digest. I've heard both sides, I've heard pros, I've heard cons. I'm very pleased that there are a lot of passionate folks here tonight. I'm enjoying Pike Fest. But just because something is so popular, doesn't mean we integrate the people who are negatively affected by this. You know, it's a lot to digest, and I'm very sorry that people are being, and businesses are being negatively affected. I certainly applaud all the hard work that goes into this event, and certainly, last year, benefited greatly from it for getting out the vote. And I thought that...
It has nothing to do with Tessie. You have the, I know she has the floor, but Tessie, you have to, I said, we're going to listen to them for 2021, so you'll have time to do it.
Okay, so it's a tie vote, now, I just want to make sure we all understand, this vote, my thing, is not necessary. All we're doing here is having a discussion. And now, all of a sudden, we have a motion to lock in the date. And we've been discussing it now for an hour and a half, or whatever it is. We don't need to decide tonight. It is not necessary. We have a park and rec group, new subcommittee, and they're going to meet, and they're going to have a conversation. That's their job, right? That's their job. And we got to let them do their job. So, Mr. Brandt, I would ask you to withdraw your motion.
I'm not withdrawing my motion.
The motion fails.
No, 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 no. You have a motion out there with a second. You, as the chair, are obliged to bring it to a vote.
We just did.
Oh, you voted now? I'm sorry.
The chairman, when there's a tie, the chairman votes.
That's right.
So it's enough. We don't have to decide a decision, so...
No, we do have to decide, ladies and gentlemen.
No, the vote, the vote was just taken, and the vote failed.
Two whole Pike Fests on Bethlehem Pike on September 12th was just denied. We denied Pike Fest for 2020, just right now.
I said, that's incorrect. I said incorrect. So, all right, the vote, the bottom solicitor didn't give an opinion about, was that just a vote?
I'm sure...
Is it canceled for this year?
It is not canceled.
We both... The motion was not canceled. There's no motion to cancel the event.
Not...
Is it reasonable to ask when, like, is there a date by which you could all determine what date, egg, location, if they're to... Because we do, we are going to run out of time.
Well, what are the messages? When do you meet, what's your drop dead date?
About three weeks ago.
That doesn't help. So, yeah. As we said before, we do need to have vendors, their team, and this, that, and the other. You know, that's what we do with these things, it takes a lot of planning. So, I mean, if I, if I said, you know, middle of February, is that reasonable? I mean, I'd like it to be tonight, but let's say, obviously, it's not going to be. So I don't know how much time it takes to deliver anything, which means when, where, and what nature of events it takes. If we say, two weeks from tonight, is that reasonable? Or are we saying, oh, March 31st? It isn't reasonable.
Chair, can I make a comment?
Sure.
I just want, wanted to be clear, we didn't have the subcommittee meeting yet, and we had tried to schedule it, schedules were not corresponding. So the first date that we could meet was February 1st. So this is the first time that the community has shared information with us about some of the issues, some of the concerns, some of the positives, and some of the negatives, and to get a larger picture. The subcommittee plans to meet on Saturday. I think it's reasonable to assume that after we meet, that we can then bring back our feedback to the board, and then actually have a real vote. Because this vote was merely just to affirm a date without us having a meeting, and not even going back and talking to the subcommittee, to see if there's suggestions as to, if it could be moved to Sunday reasonably this year, and then explore other options moving forward, if it needs to be at a different look. All of those things have yet to be explored. To just say, at this moment, make this decision without all the information, just based upon an hour and a half of hearing the community's conversation, the community's feedback, their opinion on it, I think doesn't necessarily need to take place. So to say right now, you must decide, you have to move forward, if you're saying that you can't move forward at all. Because in two weeks, we will have another meeting, we'll have had our subcommittee meeting, and we can bring it to the chairman and ask for it on the agenda, and then have a true vote.
So, okay, so, listen, two weeks from tonight, you can put that on your calendars, after you meet Saturday, or whenever the first is, and you can possibly have a vote. For date, location, and nature of the event, because we're here all day.
What date is that?
This February 11th.
February 9th is the current year, which year finish?
That's the, that's the issue. Yeah, I think that would be the goal.
Mr. Chair, how many goals do you have? Yes, Mr. Brandt?
I'd just like to address what Danielle just said. I think when the subcommittee, which was appointed by you, it's something the subcommittees I created in 1995, and '93, in conjunction with all the supervisors, working together as for what categories they would take. for what categories they would take, I think what you heard tonight, Danielle and Tessie, is the fact that this event is so big that it takes more than two weeks to decide. This committee has worked and, as you heard, they started to meet the week after the last Pipe Fest for this coming year. So I don't think you're going to have enough time to really capture what that committee does in the course of a year. But at least I'm hearing something that you and Tessie will meet. Hopefully, you'll meet with this committee to realize what could be jeopardy and take a bigger picture for 2021. That's all I can say.
Okay, so the goal would be to have a meeting in two weeks. How is your meeting here? So we can discuss this again and determine, hopefully determine course of action. Meeting is adjourned.